For Monday, January 12th, I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing, "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. I've moved to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councilor McLean?
I'm going to move the next city council meeting to be held on December 15th, 2014, to be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the votes. Thank you. That motion carries. We've moved to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, McGovern. I would move the council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Again, seeing nobody ringing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. This will bring us to the delegation portion of the agenda. And before we open up for delegations, Mr. City Manager, I believe you have an introduction to make for us today.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given and to council. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce our new community growth director. It's Koji Miyagi. And this is actually Koji's very first day working with the city, so welcome him aboard.
Welcome, Koji. And we do have a community growth agenda on later on today, later on in the meeting. So any tough questions, we'll make sure that we direct them your way. Welcome to the city of Grand Prairie. So we'll move on to the regular delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have every regular city council meeting for anybody in the community that would like to come forward and address council on any community-related matter, as long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing. So, sir, if you want to come forward and address council, you're more than welcome to come to the presenter's table here. Have a seat in front of one of the microphones and just introduce yourself, starting with your name, and take it away. Have a seat. And feel free to sit down. Feel free to sit down. The microphone will pick you up best that way. No worries.
I have some serious situations. I'll explain my residency here. First off, I was a resident of Grand Prairie for a period of the time of August 1956 till the first part of November in 1993.
And, sir, I'll just ask you to start with your name, so we know who...
Oh, I'm sorry. John, Plain John. It's the only one that gave me. And the last name is Gordica, G-O-R-D-I-C-A.
Thanks very much, John.
Presently, I am a resident of the county. But I'll have to do a little description there because I am the last remaining piece of land that's between 108th Street and 116th Street. Okay, everybody's familiar with 68th Avenue. And I'm on the east side of 116. And I'm the only piece of land that's not yet acquired by the city. But there are... The phone does ring. Much to my delight. My problem is with sleds, ski sleds, off-road vehicles. I got the bylaw today, and there's only a few articles in there which I don't think people observe or even are aware of. And the problem with me is the fact that there is no signage anywhere that says sleds are not allowed. I've gone to bylaw office and talked with them, and they passed me off to the engineering building. And they stated that it's a transportation dilemma, so you have to address them there. Well, I wasn't able to talk to anybody today, but I gave them a description and a diagram of what occurs. And my statement today is, all these sleds are not county. There might be an odd one, but they all come in from O'Brien Lake, Pinnacle Ridge, Pinnacle West, that whole north area on the north side of 68th Avenue, and O'Brien Lake as well. And many of them are just junior people. After school, they're out there. Earlier in the fall, they're on other vehicles chasing deer. And even in the winter, they were chasing deer. But now, we have this problem of the noise pollution, like it would scare the wits out of an elder person because maybe they're not familiar with it. You can't even sleep during the day if you're a night worker. And they keep infiltrating there. Somebody is going to get killed. That is a... That's something that should not happen. And as the usual saying is, "We can't let this ever happen again." I think that statement should be taken out of the vocabulary, and we should say, "What can we prevent this from happening?" And there is nothing addressing it right now. So I would like some attention paid to that. And signage is an important thing. I'm sure that a person that sells a sled or a quad or whatever, the retailer doesn't provide the person with the rule of the city bylaw, or neither do the licensing people. So that dilemma remains, and I would like some attention on that.
Okay. Thanks very much for the presentation. I see that you had a... You do have a chart there, and there may be some questions from council members. If you wanted to show the chart to council, you can actually put it on that little piece of plastic there where the X is. And our folks can run the camera above you.
Yeah, I didn't draw any north directions or anything, but it's all there with an address. Oh, it shows where I reside on that 70-acre parcel on 116th. And the little circle there and a couple lines in, that's my driveway into my property.
Sure.
But this brings to another question in point here. It's snow removal at this time. It's sad that I have to say that I'm 76 years old today, not today, but just last month. And it's been a hardship. And my road is continually piled in. And my wife works every day at Beerstow and Associates. And I have a hard time with my four-by-four getting onto that particular avenue. And I've been clearing it myself with my little tractor. Good Samaritan came by yesterday and cleaned out my entire driveway. But he also cleaned the mess that it's left on my... And you have to understand that on the north side of 68, there is that slopy berm, and it goes all the way through. There's no place for snow to be piled there. That entire roadway goes onto our side of the road, and it remains there. But there's nobody that goes in behind any of the blades that push the snow there to clean off my driveway. And I don't own that snow. It comes off 68th Avenue, period. And I need access. What if a fire occurred or an ambulance, et cetera? Like I say, I'm not in a health condition today. So that's a big concern. And I've gone to numerous places now. I've been to city bylaw office and reported that there. I went to the engineering department. Very hard to attain anybody there that would responsibly give you an answer. It's a toss-around, and it's got to stop. We need some attention. Something has to be done now. Now, I just found that out today when I went to the bylaw department, that on 116th, there's a dribbly little line right there. And they say, "Now, that is a city's..." They've got a signpost there, that's city property. I wasn't aware of that. I go that way, and I never even noticed it. But it is there, apparently. Now, the other thing that comes into contention here is the fact that there are trees that go down that entire 3,500 feet of property which my wife and I own. And I had Mr. Van Volkingberg, two and a half years ago, come by because the people are annoyed with the trees. And I agreed to have some removed. And I said, he went and marked them with his orange paper, or plastic or whatever they use, and he said, "We will be back and get it done." Well, it's two and a half years and more, and it's still not done. But now, I went by today, and I noticed there are no flags there anymore telling you which trees they could remove. So because that doesn't... That part of the road now says city or city boundary. I don't know who's responsible for it. But I agreed with the county to remove some trees. And they could leave, you know, stumps at a certain height, and it would prevent other entry into our property.
So I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
So you had a concern about sleds?
All sleds is one of them, yes.
And then you had another concern about your driveway?
The driveway is all, yeah.
And just for the trees, so these are, if on your map there, the way that I'm looking...
The trees are at this corner here, and they... The trees extend all the way down to the creek that's beside the power substation.
And so you're saying the squiggly line is...
Yeah. But, you know, it's a simple removal. You don't have to remove all the trees. The fact only remains, you just remove the branches up the side of the tree that are hanging over.
Sure. But so, and when you said that you were in contact with somebody about which trees could be removed, was that somebody from the city of Grand Prairie?
No, not a bit, because I did not realize that... I found that out today, that there is a city signage post there that says city boundary.
I believe the city boundary goes to sort of the intersection of 116th and 60th.
Certain area, yeah, a certain...
So I just want to clarify, so are you concerned? Would you like the city of Grand Prairie to do something about your tree?
Well, now that it's up in the air between city council, I guess, and the county, because they called me here approximately three weeks ago. And what happened was, a neighbor that lives on the east side of Flying Shot Lake in one of the acreages, he knocked on my door and he asked me if I was a property owner. I said, "Yes, my wife and I own the property." And he says, "Well, we have a problem with your intersection there." I says, "I understand that. It is serious. You can get killed there." I mean, that happens at the correction line. It happens everywhere. But this is a thing that could be remedied just by simple branch removal up the west side of those trees, up to a height of, say, 15, 20 feet. And the problem solved. But county didn't do it. Flags aren't there anymore. And now I don't know who's going to continue to look after the problem.
Okay.
You know, it's a new problem for you people.
Yeah, absolutely the first time.
Yeah. Well, yeah. Things change quickly.
Yeah. Okay. Well, so there may be some questions for you. Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming, John.
Yes.
This is the best time to approach and speak to council directly. Just two I'm going to bring up, if that map could stay up there, I'd appreciate it. Where he said his driveway is right on 68 there, that's actually a major intersection. So I would like to see Arasio, Director of Community Safety, and then Robert Carroll, Transportation. There's only a couple driveways all the way on that side.
Yeah, there are. It's just the old...
And that's a major, major...
The old BD residence and myself.
It's a concern that could be brought forward to Community Safety or Arasio. The other one, I want to thank you for coming, both skidoo's. We do have a bylaw.
I know. I've seen it. But there's only two little items in there that say whatever it says, and it's not very...
We... I live on 68 on the east.
Oh.
So I have a share. If an RCP officer lives in the subdivision, asks me all the time for the last four years since I've been council, "What are we going to do about this bylaw?" And I said, "Well, sometimes we've got bylaws and they sound good." We're not forcing them. I think that could be directed to maybe a community safety meeting as well, and maybe come to the community safety meeting. I think that could be redirected later on. And I think that would be a good thing. There is quite a bit. They're going all over the place. And I know Yellin, if you can bring him downtown, the main street, if we want to do that, then let's get rid of the bylaw. But anyways, I think we should be enforcing it.
Yeah.
No questions then for the delegation?
Well, my question is, I was going to say, it's not just on the west side of 68. I live on the east, and it's...
Yeah, it's in the housing area. That's it's...
Well, I'm just... He's talking about 68.
Okay. Sounds, Councilor McLean, like you're agreeing with the delegation that it's...
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Rice?
So, John, are you... Do you think that the problem would be solved with putting up signage? That illegal to ride those snow machines and enforcement?
Well, I could put signs up, but for me, it's difficult even...
No, I mean official city signs.
Yeah. There are none that I've noticed anyway.
Do you think the situation would improve with signage? And then once the signage goes up, increased enforcement?
Well, they're trying to do their best, but they have no equipment to pursue the people because I've stopped on 114th, which is a street. And opposite that is the entry into Bill Beatty's old property, which I have indicated here is city, which KCM Construction is developing presently. And that's part of their route. They all come from the O'Brien Lake, and they come from Pinnacle, Pinnacle West, and all that stuff where McLean resides to the north.
So did enforcement services tell you that they don't have snowmobiles to pursue them?
That's correct. They have nothing to... I've stopped on that city, on Beatty's property there, and waited, you know, for people. Soon as they see me stopped, they divert and they're gone. You can't... You don't even know if they have a license on the machinery. And the problem really remains that when school is out, it appears like there are more youth out there. And there are adults out there, and they're pulling their kids, and they're pulling them across 68, and it's a dangerous situation. And the other thing that I really dread is 114th Street. When you come down from the north, it's quite a slope. It needs a lot of sanding. And there's a big power transformer in that vicinity. You have to go across the stop line to view anything coming from the east. It was poor engineering. On... I saw six white hats there, and that's where they placed that pedestal. And it's massive. Plus, there are these block units that they try to blockade our quads, et cetera, sleds. It does not...
Gordica, I just want to make sure that we're on specific issues here.
Yeah, okay.
I'd be happy if you'd like to make an appointment. We can come in the office and talk about some of the other issues.
Yeah.
But if there were some specific ones that you wanted to bring to council's attention, we heard sledding. We heard the tree issue.
The tree, yeah. That's something between you and the county to decide. And I have no...
Snow removal specifically.
And snow removal, yeah. I mean, that's a hazard for us because it at times gets as high as this table.
Sure. Okay. I see Councilor McLean?
Yeah.
I do have a question. Thank you. Question, John, is that in our new budget, we're hiring a new bylaw officer or two. Do you think if they're... That would help if they actually enforced it a bit and get out there for stopping this or helping lessen it?
Well, the bylaw officers I talked to today in that old library building, they said they have... Or caught a few youngsters or adults or whatever doing that. But I don't know if they were fined or just let go or given the verbal, "But you can't do that." And that's about it. So there isn't much attention paid to that, really, by bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Gord. Appreciate you raising these. So the way our agenda works, and maybe something that we'll change, but we deal with issues raised by delegations like yourself towards the end of our agenda. So you're welcome to stick around for that and listen to the council meeting. It's always very exciting.
Well, you know it is. I had... I just came from the U of A, and then I was supposed to report to the Royal Alec. And I get home at 1:15 a.m. And my garage, separate from the house, the furnace motor went. I've got fertilizer, or not fertilizer, but liquid form spray stuff. I had to move it all night till 7:00 in the morning. My wife goes to work.
So you're saying that you might have better places to be than here at a council meeting? I can appreciate that.
I made an effort today, and that's probably the second time I've been in this chamber.
Well, we appreciate you being here, and so we can certainly follow up with you with whatever action council takes at the end of the meeting.
I appreciate that.
Thanks for making the time to come and join us tonight.
Can we get him to leave the map?
Sure, sure. So if you'd like to leave that map, that way we do have a number to contact you?
I've got a... I've got a... On the backside of it, I have a thing from Mr. Carroll.
That's absolutely fine, but we just want to ensure that we have a way to contact you, and you can pass that on to Arasio in the center there as you walk past.
Good.
Thanks very much, Mr. Gordica. So as I said at the outset, this is the delegation portion. If there's anybody else that was here to speak on any community matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing, now would be the time. I don't see anybody else coming forward, so I can imagine that anybody else is here for public hearings. So we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we'll move on in through unfinished business, which we have none, and into public hearings. And I would call to order the public hearing for item 7.1, which is a number of bylaw amendments and area structure plan amendments, outline plan amendments for the Arbor Hills area. And I'll look to Mr. Welton for an introduction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application involves amendments to the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan, the Arbor Hills Two Outline Plan, and the Land use by law. The area is within the Arbor Hills Two neighborhood, located north of 132nd Avenue and east of 108th Street. I'm going to close this and this. Helix Engineering and Land, on behalf of the landlords, have submitted applications to amend those three bylaws, the purposes of which are to allow for multifamily development of the subject area in accordance with the RC Low Medium Density Residential District, which is attached as Attachment 5. The area is currently vacant and is being serviced for industrial development, for residential development, sorry, Mr. Mayor. The subject area is intended to be divided by a lane, so both the north and south-facing lots will be accessed from a shared lane. The north side of the site fronts onto the Main Collector Road through the neighborhood, and the south side fronts onto a local road. The area is surrounded by future low-density residential development on all sides. The Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan, which is the map on which you have before you, shows that the Arbor Hills Two area is primarily residential with two commercial sites adjacent to 132nd Avenue. Multifamily residential sites are intended to be located south of the Linear Environmental Reserve Municipal Reserve and adjacent to 108th Street. The proposed ASP amendment would add a multifamily node in the center of the Arbor Hills Two area. And again, that's identified on the area structure plan map. The second amendment involves the Arbor Hills Two Outline Plan. Map 3 of the Arbor Hills Two Outline Plan shows that the area is intended for development as a low-density residential neighborhood in accordance with the Arbor Hills ASP. The proposed amendment would change the designation of the central part of the area to multifamily to accommodate the proposed zoning change. The third bylaw amendment is to the land use by law. The subject area is currently RG, general residential, and the proposed zoning is RC, low-medium density residential, again, the purpose of which is to allow for development of multifamilies such as townhouses. And again, the RC district is attached. The council is... The city is required to hold a public hearing before considering amendments to bylaws to amend the land use by law area structure plans and to advertise the public hearing. Advertising and other notification has been undertaken and required, including a newspaper advertising, letters to adjacent property owners, and signage placed on the property. We did not receive any comments or concerns from the public as a result of our referrals. The amendments are hierarchical in nature and should be considered in the order presented. In summary, the proposed amendments allow for multifamily development of the subject area instead of single or semi-detached residential development. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. Counselor Logan, opportunity for questions from administration at this point. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. Curious to know the level of density that's being proposed for this. You mentioned townhouses. Is it just to that level, or is it more intense than that?
Mr. Welton?
To the mayor, the low to the RC district allows a combination of types of development. The district would allow any of that form of development. The applicants are actually here to answer more specific questions about what exactly they're proposing. But the RC does allow higher density than what the RG district would allow.
Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. And I just had a couple of questions. It appears that there's a lane going through that area. With that, even with the change in the zoning outlined, would that rear lane still be included in the area structure plan?
The lane would continue to be included in the outline plan as essentially as part of what the subdivision is supposed to follow.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Okay. I don't see anybody else with questions for administration at this time, so we'll ask if there's anybody here to speak in support of the application. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the proposed amendments? I see one presenter. Welcome. I think you know the drill.
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. Counselors, I am Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering, representing potential lands and developers for the Arbor Hills neighborhood. Not a whole bunch to add here, just to answer a couple of questions that administration couldn't answer. The densities on these are at this stage, and again, this could change. This is a... As far as zoning, but we do have a subdivision application going forward, following this with mostly fourplexes and, I think, three, sixplexes or something along those lines. The intention is to develop it similar to the Highlands in Pinnacle Ridge. So kind of the neighborhood is being developed as sort of a... Tending to be a little bit higher-end development, so I expect a nicer facade in front of these and being that they are very central to the neighborhood. And with the intention that there would be rear access as well to try to take a lot of the parking off the streets. So that's very similar, if you want to consider a comparable product, the Highlands and Pinnacle Ridge is sort of what they're trying to do after.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the delegation? Questions for Counselor? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Scott. I noticed in a lot of our subdivisions over the last so many years, really, I don't know if the planning's been too well for winter conditions that we're having. And I know I got about eight feet high in front of my house of snow, and it's a wider lot. And so when you say you're going to put more density in there, how's it going to all work when we got to plow it and service it and people getting around for safety in the winter?
So, little bit difficult for me to answer that without understanding the city's procedures for snow removal, but the front of these lots would be essentially walkway. So in theory, there should only be a four-foot walkway in the front yards of the units. Relative and comparative to a single-family dwelling, there should be more locations that snow could be placed. This is on a collector street, so I would expect that there would be actual removal.
So what I was getting at, thinking there'd be no parking in the front. We're going to ask them all park in the back, and there'd be proper parking and...
All their parking stalls will be constructed in the rear, as far as whether or not people will park there. That's up to them, unless we're requested by... Which is not typical of administration to request us to put no parking signage up. But at this moment in time, that's something that's determined by cities.
It'll have to be put up. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for the delegation? Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was wondering if you could tell me, Scott, how long, and maybe you've already said this, but I missed it, I apologize, how long of a walk from the RC to 132nd, for example, to catch a bus?
There actually is bus routes planned internal to the neighborhood as well, so they would... And I'm going off of memory here, but I do believe it travels along that curved road, which is...
Okay.
So I believe, I don't think that the bus planning...
There is a bus somewhere in there.
There's a bus route. I'm 99% sure, all the way along Arbor Hills Boulevard.
Okay. Any further questions for the delegation? Counsel? Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming, John. This is the best time to approach and speak to council directly. Just two I'm going to bring up, if that map could stay up there, I'd appreciate it. Where he said his driveway is right on 68 there, that's actually a major intersection. So I would like to see Arasio, Director of Community Safety, and then Robert Carroll, Transportation. There's only a couple driveways all the way on that side.
Yeah, there are. It's just the old...
And that's a major, major...
The old BD residence and myself.
It's a concern that could be brought forward to Community Safety or Arasio. The other one, I want to thank you for coming, both skidoo's. We do have a bylaw.
I know. I've seen it. But there's only two little items in there that say whatever it says, and it's not very...
We... I live on 68 on the east.
Oh.
So I have a share. If an RCP officer lives in the subdivision, asks me all the time for the last four years since I've been council, "What are we going to do about this bylaw?" And I said, "Well, sometimes we've got bylaws and they sound good." We're not forcing them. I think that could be directed to maybe a community safety meeting as well, and maybe come to the community safety meeting. to all work when we got to plow it and service it and people getting around for safety in the winter?
So, little bit difficult for me to answer that without understanding the city's procedures for snow removal, but the front of these lots would be essentially walkway, so in theory there should only be a four foot walkway in the front yards of the couple of units. Relative and comparative to a single family dwelling, there should be more locations that snow could be placed. This is on a collector street, so I would expect that there would be snow removal there to be full removal.
So what I was getting at, thinking there'd be no parking in the front, we're going to ask them all park in the back and there'd be proper parking and?
All their parking stalls will be, will be constructed in the rear, as far as whether or not people will park there, that's up to them. I don't, unless we're requested by, which is not typical of administration to request us to put no parking signage up, but at this level of time, that's something that's determined by cities.
It'll have to be put up. Thank you.
Any further questions for the delegation? Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was wondering if you could tell me, Scott, the, how long, and maybe you've already said this, but I missed it, I apologize, how long of a walk from the RC to 132nd, for example, catch a bus?
There actually is bus routes planned internal to the neighborhood as well, so they would, and I'm going off of memory here, but the, I do believe it travels along that curved road, which is.
Okay.
So I believe, I don't think that the bus planning.
There is bus somewhere in the.
There's, there's a bus route, I'm 99% sure, all the way along Arbor Hills Boulevard.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the delegation, counsel? I don't see anybody else in the queue. Ms. Rossler, anything else that you want to present?
Good, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Thanks for being here tonight. This is the delegation portion of the public hearing. This is an opportunity for anybody that wanted to come forward and express their opinion about the proposed changes. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Is there anybody else who would like to come forward to express their opinions on this proposed changes? I don't see anybody else coming forward. Before I close the public hearing, I'll ask if there are any further questions for administration from council? Council, I don't see anybody rushing to do a request to speak, except Counsel O'Toole. Counsel O'Toole?
I couldn't let you go by.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Is there an estimated number of residents that we can calculate that'll be living in this area?
Ms. Welton?
To the mayor, the, the tables that form part of the bylaw actually like identify sort of our, our estimates. This represents sort of our estimated after. I don't have the estimated before here, but generally, the difference between, say, a town, a townhouse development might be 40 units per hectare and a RG, single family residential might be 20 units per hectare. So you get, you get twice as, twice the number of units, but the number of people per unit drops from 3.2 to 2.5. So going from RC to RG might represent about, it's certainly not a doubling, it might be, you know, like a 55 or 60% increase in the number, in the population.
Okay, thanks very much. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. And I just, one more question, just going to bounce off what Kevin McClain said earlier. Are there any parking requirements for this lot as, as I guess a RC district or?
To the mayor, the, the parking standards in the bylaw will, depending on the type of development, like a single family dwelling requires two parking stalls on site, a multifamily in, such as fourplexes, townhouses, that sort of thing, I believe the parking requirement is 1.5 per unit plus 15% for visitors. So it works out to, I think, about 1.7 per, per unit instead of two. So, but the intent is, is that all parking required for these developments would be required on site and have access off that shared lane.
That's answered my question, thank you. Counsel Thieson, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Sorry, Counsel Rice, you just jumped in when I was clearing the queue. Please make sure your microphone's on.
Do we anticipate at 1.7 requirements? Nobody that I know has 0.7 of a car, even a smart car doesn't kind of fit that. So actually, going into it, we're expecting problems with them parking on the arterial.
Ms. Welton?
I don't, I don't believe that we expect parking problems. I mean, the, basically, the way the bylaw works or is, certainly is worded, that it requires all, like the amount, the amount of parking that is established as an appropriate amount of parking for an average household is, is required to be provided on site. I don't think anybody would argue that, given the nature of Grand Prairie and the number of vehicles and company vehicles that people own, the number of vehicles, you know, can't exceed the amount of the, the parking requirement. With respect to the 0.7, obviously, like we round up to the next highest number, so like a, a fourplex might require like seven parking stalls, not 6.8 or something. But certainly, the expectation is, is that the development on the site will provide the amount of parking that the bylaw requires, although, like I said, I think everybody in the city recognizes that, that vehicle ownership here exceeds probably most other places. The size of it and the size of the vehicles, et cetera, is, presents challenges as well.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Welton. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Try that again. I don't see anybody else in the queue. So I'll close the public hearing and we'd move on to business arising. We have a number of motions. Counsel Rice, you ready with a glass of water? Okay.
I move second reading of bylaw C 121-2D, being an amendment to the Arbor Hills area structure plan.
Okay. Just had to get the 121-2D. Well, that's, that's all the right numbers, just a different way of saying it, okay? So a motion for second reading, open for discussion and debate. Any discussion or debate, counsel? Second reading of the area structure plan amendment. Don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Rice?
I'll try this a different way. I move the third reading be given to bylaw C 1212D.
That one I can understand, thanks, Counsel Rice. Any discussion or debate on, on third reading? I don't see anybody ringing in, so again, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counsel Rice?
I move second reading of bylaw C 1281-1, being an amendment to the Arbor Hills two outline plan.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. A motion for second reading for amendment to the Arbor Hills two outline plan, open for discussion and debate. Any discussion or debate, counsel? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Rice?
I move third reading of bylaw C 1281-1.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Again, any discussion or debate, counselors, counselors on this third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Rice?
I move that second reading be given to bylaw C 1260-22, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Any discussion or debate on this proposed land use bylaw amendment? Again, I don't see any hands or anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Second reading carries. Counsel Rice?
I move third reading of bylaw C 1260-22.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Again, any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. That concludes all of our business for that public hearing. Would take us into our reports items, and we'd start with item 8.1. Bylaw C 1260-26, the land use bylaw amendment from urban reserve to RS small lot residential and RM medium density residential. I'll look to Mr. Welton again for an introduction.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce Barstow, on behalf of the landlords, submitted an application to rezone land within the Riverstone neighborhood from urban reserve to small lot residential and RM medium density residential in accordance with the Riverstone outline plan. The areas within the Riverstone, an area between 84th Avenue to the north and a stormwater drain is channel to the south and it's directly west of Brookfield and Eagle Estates in the county. Council is required to hold a public hearing and advertising of the public hearing will be undertaken as required. The urban reserve district is a pre-development district. Rezoning is required in order for the subdivision of the area to proceed, and the proposed amendment is consistent with the Riverstone outline plan. So we're recommending that council give it first reading and establish February 9th as the public hearing date. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. So we have a recommendation to establish that first reading and that date, time and location. Could I have that motion? Counselor Logan?
Sure, I'd move that we give first reading to bylaw C 1260-26.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Logan. First reading, no discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan?
Sure, I'd move that Monday, February 9th, 2015, at 6:30 PM, at City Council chambers be established as date, time and location for a public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counsel Logan. Any discussion as to the date, time and location as proposed for that public hearing? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries and would take us to item 8.2, bylaw C 1260-24, land use bylaw amendment for Cobblestone East, to rezone from RS to RC. Ms. Welton?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Helic Engineering has applied for an amendment to the land use bylaw to rezone the northwest quarter of 19, section 19, actually, I think it's township 71, range 5, west of the 6th Meridian, from RS small lot residential to RC low to medium density residential district in the Cobblestone East outline plan neighborhood. The outline plan amendment, basically, there is a land use bylaw amendment and a Cobblestone East outline plan amendment. Cobblestone East outline plan amendment was adopted by resolution, not by bylaw, and so at the time of the public hearing, we will bring forward the Cobblestone East outline plan amendment for council's consideration at that same time. The subject area is on the eastern edge of the city, north of 96th Avenue and east of 88A Street. As previously, council is required to hold a public hearing prior to giving second and third reading, and we will be undertaking advertising and other public notification as required. The application, applicant is requesting to amend the bylaw and the Cobblestone East outline plan to change the property from small lot residential to low, medium density residential in order to accommodate multi-attached residential dwellings. And therefore, we are recommending that you give this first reading and establish February 9th as the date for the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. So we're looking for a motion to introduce first reading. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that bylaw C 1260-24, being amendment to the land use bylaw, be given first reading.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Again, first reading, so no discussion and debate on that one. I'll call for the vote. I think I'm looking for one more, counsel, does everybody's votes register? There we go. That motion carries, and I think we need a motion for date, time and location.
Thank you. I'd move that Monday, February 9th, 2015, at 6:30 PM, at City Council chambers be established as a date, time and location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any discussion as to date, time and location proposed? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for a vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. I believe that handles all of our reports items and would take us into committee business, starting with the Community Growth Committee from December 16th. Counselor Clayton, are you going to handle that one for us?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Just be one second. The meeting unfortunately was a bit of a brief attendance. Myself and Mayor Given were the only ones in attendance, so.
It's all the decision.
It wasn't that Mayor Given wanted to make all the motions, he didn't have a choice. So first of all, I'd like to move that the minutes from the Community Growth meeting held Tuesday, December 16th be accepted as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? There is one note that I'd like to make about a motion that I made, as with all the motions at that meeting. Sorry. With regard to brownfield sites, in the motion, it reads with a specific focus on fallen gas station sites. I believe that should be former, not, not fallen. And, that is, yeah, that was the only one. So with, if we can do that little catch.
Sure, as amended.
Thanks very much. Any other discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Clayton, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Sure, just a couple of brief things. Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association presented at the meeting, so it was great to get an update from them, as well as an update from the water, Wapiti River Water Management Plan, so that was a good update. An interesting thing, Mayor of Quebec City sent us a letter looking for support for an initiative aimed at cities and communities across North America who have French or Francophone history and heritage, so it'd be interesting to hear what we come back with for that. And other than that, there wasn't much else.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. We'll move to 9.2, the Community Living Committee, and Counsel Radburn, I think that was yours.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held December 16th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Things fallen that we have to correct? Seeing nothing, I'll call for vote. Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council accept the request for gifting kind of one day per provincial swim meet in exchange for equal value and sponsorship recognition for 2015. This is a request that came from the Piranhas Swim Club, and there are two provincial meets planned for 2015. One is a youth swim meet, I think it's Division B or something, and the other is a master's provincial swim meet. So they're, they're involved in both of those, and committee is recommending that council, they had asked for one day without, without fees, and so I think they're both two-day events. But the, I guess the committee really felt this was a way to support the hosting of provincial meets. We want to grow the opportunities to host provincial and national events, and we felt this was investment to, to be a sponsorship partner in the, in these, these events, and obviously, these events will bring people to our fair city. Thank you.
Counsel Radburn, any discussion or debate on the motion as proposed? Counsel McClain?
Just a quick question, Counsel Radburn. That master's swim meet, they've been looking at for a couple of years to get it here, now it's finally coming. What is the numbers? I think it's mostly been held in Edmonton and Calgary, so I think it's pretty exciting for the north. The numbers, do you have any numbers there, like the thousand or more, that they're not sure? And they're looking at BC too, I think.
Counsel Radburn, just make sure you're live.
My only comment is, yes, that we have been seeking to host those events, and, and really, we're being told that people are looking to move away from the alternating Evan and Calgary, so it's nice for us to get on the rotation, hopefully. In terms of the numbers for each of the two swim meets, I would have to ask Director Roth if he remembers, because I don't, I'm sorry.
Mr. Roth, do you have any indication of numbers for the event?
I, I'm sorry, I don't recall the, there was an economic assessment done on the, each of the events, and they used average number of attendance, but I don't recall the, the exact numbers.
I'd say it'd be a few hundred though, Counsel McClain, of participants, not families and others that might come with them.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Radburn, anything you wanted to highlight from the meeting?
Thank you, there, I guess three other highlights that I would share. We did have a delegation from UDI speaking about the aquiterr infrastructure fee related to neighborhood parks, irrigation and rinks, and the administration was directed to look at potential solutions and bring that back. We also had a amendment to the Parks Master Plan Design Manual Requirements relative to tree plantings, which basically maintain this same number of trees that we have been contemplating and working towards, but we have provided a little bit of flexibility so that 20% of those trees can be a little smaller and shorter than the others. So this way, it would, we still felt it would maintain the numbers, because we're at 100 this year, moving to 115 next year and 125 per hectare of parks as we move forward. And so this was a way to reduce some costs a little bit to developers, but maintain that those numbers and still having a size that we think would, would grow and thrive in our, our city. And finally, the last one, sorry, was we did receive the seniors mapping and planning report that was quite extensive and will be very useful as we move towards looking at the needs of our seniors in our, in our community as, as, as we continue on into the future.
Thanks, Counsel Radburn. I've seen potentially a question or comment. Counsel Rice?
Going back to recommendation number 9-02, in the Parks and Open Space Master Plan recommendations, this change is a result of the trees, I think, if I recall correctly, was in response to a delegation of businesspeople that said, we, we, it doesn't even work physically. Is that not accurate?
No, there, there was a concern expressed, that's why we asked the administration to go back and work with UDI, and this was the solution that came up.
So it was in direct response to, to some concerns we responded to. Yes, thank you.
We didn't change in terms of the numbers. We looked at providing a little bit of a change in a different way.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Also, the, the planting style, I think there was some contemplation of more grouped planting rather than individual trees, which would make maintenance easier.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so Counsel Radburn, thanks very much. We moved to 9.3, that was the council committee of the whole from January 5th. We look for a motion to receive that set of minutes. That was from our budget discussions. Counsel McClain?
Yeah, I'm going to council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held January 5th. whole meeting held January fifth, two thousand fifteen.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Open for discussion and debate on that set of minutes. Does it look like it captures the meeting? It must, because I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote to adopt those minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to council approve the two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen long-term capital plan as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Open for discussion and debate. Of course, this capital plan is the result of council's look at, a relook at the capital plan, just after the start of the new year, as council remembers. We essentially built ourselves a little bit of flexibility with regard to provincial funding in a couple of areas, where essentially we said some programs, we're going to hold off on funding them, the program or capital plan, capital item, wouldn't be going ahead, and we would not commit to spending those provincial funds. And obviously, some provincial context, which I think influenced a lot of those decisions. Any other discussion or debate on the capital plan as presented? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So that'll take us to the Community Safety Committee from January sixth, and Councilor McLean, I think that was your set of minutes as well.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee and held January sixth, two thousand fifteen.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Open for discussion and debate on that set of minutes. Any questions or comments or errors that we want to catch down? Seeing nothing, everything must be in order, I'll call for the vote to adopt those minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor McLean, anything you wanted to highlight from the meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The meeting was very, not very long. Our next one's going to be really action-packed, from what I'm hearing, but there was a few items brought up, but the one I want to speak to was from Councilor Chris Thieson about safety for taxis and just IDing, and a question was asked at the Community Safety Meeting about, you know, if you get into a taxi, what's the individual's name, what's he look like, and how big is the ID that we can tell? And it's in the front and the rear, in the front seat, and it's not very big, it's, I don't know, a little bigger than a license card, I guess. So actually, the idea is to have it behind the backseat, and actually be a good size and possibly a number and individual's picture and name, so they're going to come together with that, and I think it's a very easy and non-expensive change, and I think that was a good motion brought forward by Councilor Thieson. That's everything.
Okay, thanks, Councilor McLean. So that handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence, but we did have one public delegation this evening. Mr. Gordika wrote, brought forward some issues regarding snow at the end of his rural driveway and sledding in the area. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to bring forward, I guess, or you can say the wording of, bring forward to a Community Safety Meeting, and the next one, the one after, maybe, because the next one's pretty full about snowmobiles and how bylaw is regulating that.
So refer to Community Safety, the issue of bylaw enforcement around snowmobiles within city limits. Okay. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay. That motion carries. Were there any other motions to respond to the delegation business? Councilor Radburn?
Yeah, I'd move that council direct administration to work with Mr. Gordika with respect to his concerns relative to the snow removal and the trees.
Okay.
The trees, the longest property.
Sure. To see, I suppose, to work with the resident, I guess, and find out what the city's role may be in some of those.
Correct.
Okay. So, any discussion or debate on that motion? Councilor Logan?
Yeah, so if I could ask, we're talking about the trees and so on, that's on private land, right, at this point?
I think we probably would need a little bit further information about exactly what the issue is. I think some, the concern is they may impact sightlines in that city intersection. Not a hundred percent clear whether they're all on private property or public property.
I think that's going to have some significance in the result of this motion and the investigation.
Yeah, I think, Councilor Radburn, is your intent to ask staff to take any action or just to direct them to enter discussions with the resident? Just turn, make sure your microphone's on, Councilor Radburn.
Thank you. I think we need to start with administration working with Mr. Gordika, and I think the administration will have a call as to whether we, needs to be come back to committee or it can be solved without coming back to committee.
Okay, so, open for discussion and debate. Seeing nobody else ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. I believe that handles all of our delegation business. We had no notices of motion tonight, and that would take us to council member reports, and we'll start with Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. On December sixteenth, we had our quarterly meeting at Paza, and just a couple of issues I wanted to bring up that went through on the meeting. One of them was the role that they're playing, the provincial government has started, it's called AMIRA, Alberta Environment Monitoring Evaluation and Reporting Agency, and it's supposed to be like the umbrella and then the air shields come together that are in Alberta. So it's kind of a discrepancy of how it's going to work and how everything's going to come to play, and so that was brought up quite a bit at the meeting, and they're still working with it. There's a new individual ahead of that, and they're looking forward to great success with it, but it's very new and it stages on this. So I have to report that, since I've been on it for a year, they're still looking at direction, you say, from AMIRA and the provincial government. The other one, too, as well, is I believe there's eight airsheds in Alberta. I could be off one, there might be nine, but I believe there's eight, and what I was surprised to learn, it only covers half our province. So we talk about a lot of environmental stuff, but we got a ways to go yet, and so lots of learning, and there's lots of meetings coming up, and I'm looking forward to it. And a lot of the big questions on AMIRA, how it's actually going to work, do they have this proper staffing now, and how it's going to be laid out. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean, for that report on Paza. Councilor Clayton, I believe you had something from Nighthawk?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As everybody knows, there's lots of snow out there, so that's great news for Nighthawk. There, you've had a very big opening day weekend to report. Their snow guns are working well, all the snow that they planned to make, and they were open on schedule in early December. They have, they're planning currently to purchase a few more used additional platters to go on their lift, which will increase their capacity of moving people up the hill by thirty-three percent. So as long as the temperature or the weather cooperates, everything is ready to go at Nighthawk. It looks like we're going to warm up a little bit in the latter part of this week, which should really help, and things are great at Nighthawk. So if anybody hasn't been out there yet, definitely get out and check, there's been a few things updated, so things are going well there. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Councilor Tool, I believe you had a couple of reports for us.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. First one I would like to do is the Philip J. Currie Dinosaur Museum. We had a building committee meeting here earlier this week, last week, and also a actual board meeting. As a building committee, there's a number of items that are just minor deficiencies, paint chips, light switches and stuff like that, and monitors being hooked up, but we're just waiting for the final walkthrough with P C L to open the doors. And that aspect, the building is getting very busy. We've got five months to get the filler in the museum, so the dinosaur replicas, structures, and bones and studies like that are in the process of getting manufactured as we speak right now. So it's a good thing. We have included a number of hired staff into our I D department, executive assistant, building manager, and we will be getting some committees formed, for example, development of an endowment to cultural, social, and finance. And we also have a new board member, Lynn Decides, has come on board, it's a three-year term, and all things are getting ready for September third. It will be the grand opening, and it will be in conjunction with the tour of Alberta. And previously, I mentioned earlier in the year that there will be some soft openings through July and August. There'll be some tours given, but the actual main grand opening will be September third, and we do have another bunch of celebrities coming up that weekend. My other report would be with the Peace Library System. I just wanted to, we just had a meeting earlier in late November, and I got to tell you, I was a little bit sick in December, but I did want to get this information out. Just some quick facts about the Peace Library System. There's a population served of approximately a hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred people. There's thirty-seven municipalities and one Métis settlement, and there's forty-five public libraries included in that and fifty-two schools. And we gave out long service awards, ten and fifteen-year people that have been involved in the Peace Library System, which is just awesome. We did some revisions to the policies, which included employee benefits and just updated some stuff like that, recognition program. And other than that, sir, I think that should be enough. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Councilor Tool. Councilor Rice, A U M A?
I attended some meetings of the Municipal Governance Act Review Committee. The government has really put the fast forward on this, and they're calling an increasing number of meetings with a lot, very, very rapidly. We'll be meeting next week with the business community who had some concerns what the municipalities are asking for, and we've had one initial meeting with them, and as soon as they understand the rationale for what the municipalities are asking for, it, they became, we had consensus on several issues. I also did a presentation to the elected official zone meeting on brownfields, and again, we've asked the government to look at what other jurisdictions, such as British Columbia, and they're particularly interested in Nova Scotia, that, you know, this is causing a lot of grief for municipalities if they can't get the owners of these brownfields to move that property. So I think it's moved quite a ways ahead on that from where we were last year, so that's kind of exciting. And I did discussions today with global television out of Edmonton, who was hearing rumors that there was a concern about the ambulance dispatch across the province, and certainly she was very interested to find, there is a joint committee that Alberta Health has put forth, A U M A has been sitting on that, and they're looking at devising new systems that we think will make it much more efficient as well. The G I S mapping being shared, and they were, they're just now tweaking it to make sure it doesn't violate any confidentiality, but that will get rid of a whole raft of problems, and the municipalities had pushed for the nine-one-one charge on cell phone bills. It's estimated that year that will bring in revenue of six million dollars, which will be translated directly into an increase in service. That's it.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Clayton, back to you for Grand Prairie Sport Council.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The Grand Prairie Sport Council is very excited to bring a new event, or their first event truly, that they're going to host themselves, the Sport Excellence Award, titled the Northwest Alberta Sport Excellence Award. It's going to be hosted on March seventh at Stonebridge Hotel. The premise of the event is an award, an annual, they want to make it an annual event, rather, to recognize and celebrate champions of sport across the region. The mission will be to honor the achievements of our amateur athletes, coaches, volunteers, sport leaders, and corporations that support them. There's two levels of awards. There's a high-performance award, recognizing athletes and coaches at the highest level from two thousand and fourteen, as well as community awards, and there's a few different sort of areas in there that people can be nominated for. Nominations are due by January thirty-first, and you can go online to G P Sport Council.ca to nominate people, and it's going to be a great event. We've got some good speakers lined up, and it's sort of just a fun night to recognize people from the region. So, thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. So move along to council member roundtable reports, and maybe we'll start on this side. Councilor Radburn, if you care to start us off?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just have my list I'll give to Terry, but two that I'd like to highlight is, one is the, I attended on December sixteenth, the Cultural Integration Academy graduation. It was a new program that Crime Prevention initiated in terms of, I guess, a learning and helping transition some of our newest residents to Grand Prairie from various cultures throughout the world. Very successful. It was my honor to bring greetings and also to present the awards to those who, I guess, completed the program and the instructors of the program. So that was a very good, good event, and they're starting to getting organized for their second session. And on January ninth, just recently, I attended our council retirement lunch for Jeanette Ferguson. Just was very pleased and proud to be able to attend, and I want to thank Jeanette. She worked for the city for just over thirty-six years and provided exemplary service during that time in a number of roles, so all the best to Jeanette in her retirement. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Councilor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just the one item I wanted to note, as Councilor Radburn had mentioned, was the lunch we had with former Community Growth Director Jeanette Ferguson, and it was good to give, you know, sort of a final farewell to her, and we wish her well in her journeys. I'd also like to extend a welcome, big welcome to Koji and welcome to the team, and look forward to working with you.
Councilor Tarrant? Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just as follow-up in, as well, I'd like to thank Jeanette Ferguson, Director Ferguson, for all of her work. Tending her lunch was great to hear some of her plans that are going forward in the future, and I hope she enjoys her retirement, as she will be missed.
Councilor Tool?
We got her working now. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I spent the last month actually with the flu and some illnesses, but I'm back at her about ninety percent, and I did miss a number of events because of that, but other than that, I do, I wasn't able to make it to the event for Jeanette Ferguson. She was a bit of a mentor for me as I was the chair of the Community Growth, and I will be touching base with her on a more personal level rather than the luncheon, because I actually had a Combat sports commission meeting that particular day and couldn't miss it. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Tool. We're happy to have you back at ninety percent over, because other people would rather have your ninety percent rather than somebody else's hundred percent.
Well, it was just kind of an interesting thing that I just found out today that there was more people in Alberta that took the flu shot, which was a great thing, but there's more people than ever that had the flu this year, so I don't know what to say about that.
You fit into that well. Happy to have you back. Councilor Rice?
Thank you. I will give Terry this form since I gave her the wrong form. So I attended the retirement luncheon for Jeanette Ferguson, and of course, it was one of those bittersweet moments. I was pleased to see Jeanette retiring. Unfortunately, her and I started at the city at very close to the same time. And you see Jeanette's success in the years she's been here, I think, is another reason for us to remember. We wrapped up the hundredth anniversary events, of course, on December thirty-first. Want to thank all the people that worked on it. It was a long struggle, but I think very successful. But part of our history, I think Jeanette was trained well by the former city clerk, Tish Saunders. We need to always remember that Grand Prairie was ahead of itself there, where we appointed Tish Saunders as the first female city clerk in the province of Alberta. And Jeanette was trained by Tisha and then moved on to become city clerk in. And Jeanette was trained by Tisha and then moved on to become city clerk and then a director. So it's, it's just, again, Grand Prairie's proud history of a very successful track record.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Counselor Clayton, did you have a question or a comment?
A quick thing that I forgot that I wanted to highlight, and somebody else did. I wanted to thank the city staff for an excellent event put on December 31st at Musquesee Park. I attended it, parts of it with my children, and they thought the fireworks were excellent, so I really wanted to send a big thank you out to those who were involved organizing that event. Thank you.
Counselor Thieson?
Thanks, Mayor Bill. I too attended the luncheon with Jeanette Ferguson, and just throwing my two cents, she was a bright light. I think I wrote my Christmas card to her last year, that I can't wait to work more with you in the coming years. And then six months later, she's retired. So I hope I had nothing to do with that whatsoever. But I would also like to highlight an event that recently was hosted by the city of Grand Prairie, the Grand Prairie Curling Club. Recently, we hosted the world, or sorry, the Alberta Junior Curling Championships there. Now, the only Grand Prairie rink that was involved was skipped by Janet De Jong with third Morgan Watchorn, second Carly Mackachuck, and lead Rebecca Allen. And to their credit, although I didn't see it in the newspaper here today at all, they went all the way to the final and played the defending World Junior Curling Champions, the Kelsey Rock Rink, and took it down to Last Rock. And in the end, the world champions prevailed. But on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie, I would like to thank the organizers from PCA for that event. It was a great event that was held, as well as Charlene Robinson and the Grand Prairie Curling Club. They did an excellent job of hosting, as well to all the people who came out, and to our, our fine young curlers who have shown that they too are only one shot away from becoming future World Junior Curling Champions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Logan?
Just two items. I was unable to attend the event for Jeanette Ferguson, but other than Counselor Rice, I probably worked with her longest of, I think, almost everybody in this room, in fact. Just a superb asset to the city. She is extraordinarily competent and on the personal level was a real asset to the community as well. So I certainly wish her well. The other thing I wanted to mention, just really quickly, was the council budget session that we received the minutes for. Wanted to compliment administration and my fellow members of council on the way that was handled. That was a tremendous pile of work in a short few hours. And I think we were able to do that with the right amount of information, making the decisions and keeping the debate properly on point and brief. And above all, I would credit the mayor for the job he did sharing that superb job.
Thanks very much, Counsel Logan. Certainly appreciate that. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Two things I want to speak about. I'll turn my mic on here. One, of course, I want to thank Jeanette for helping me, as Counselor Tool said, my first term, she helped me an awful lot. A couple, one thing I was really very proud of it in her last year was when I first got elected, there were some issues within permits and plumbing inspections and building and electrical. And she took on that role full steam. And a couple more individuals were hired to fill the opening there, and she was quite proud of that. And myself, as German carpenter, I was too, and I think under UDI and developers, the process has improved quite efficiently. And I want to thank her for that. She played a major role in that, that area. The other one I want to speak to is, I know a lot of you were sad, I wasn't in the country at Christmas, I was in Florida, and I had tears in the room. But the one I'm bringing up is, I was going through Tarpon Springs, and I was, I watched the procession go by with, his name was Charles Condic. And it was December 27th was his funeral procession. He was killed on duty. And he was 45, father of six children. And I would say it was probably 150 motorcycles and about 400 or 500 sheriff police cars that were following it. So three or four days there, I come back to the city, 1:00 PM, January 2nd, and an officer had to use deadly force. So I, I want to say that I hope I never see one of them again, and we stand behind our RCMP and our officers and the men and women that are helping make our community safe. And that's everything. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Just briefly for the public, a couple of council members have referred to a form as we've been doing the roundtable, and the public might not know what we're referencing, but we do try to do these council roundtables so the general public understands the events the council attends that may not be reported on as part of the minutes or any of the regular city committee meetings, to aid administration, ensuring they capture all the information that's shared, all the events. We now have a form that council members can fill out. So the reports may actually be a little bit briefer, but the intent, I believe, is to ensure that all the events that council members attend are still recorded and will form a part of the council meeting minutes. So if anybody's looking to see what stuff council attends outside of regular council meetings, that will be recorded as part of our regular minutes, but not necessarily shared in exactly the same way verbally as we have in the past around the, around the roundtable. With that, I'll just report, obviously, I also enjoyed and appreciated the retirement celebration for Ms. Ferguson. Would echo the comments made about her skill and how important she was to the organization. Prior to the Christmas break, the County of Grand Prairie and City of Grand Prairie jointly hosted a meeting of the Northern Alberta elected leaders. That was the one that Counselor Rice referred to presenting on brownfields. So Reeve Bowprey and I were happy to be able to host that on behalf of the Grand Prairie Region. And prior to that, I went to Montrose Junior High School to talk about local government to six, grade six classes. So we did three sets of two classes each, and was able to speak to all those classes about the importance of local government and the impact that it has on their day-to-day lives. And I'll say that I also enjoyed the First Footings event at Musquesee Park. I want to thank the Musquesee Park New Year's Celebration organizers. They do a fantastic job every year. And the park is full every year, which is great to see. With that, I believe our meeting is adjourned.